I call the Board of Selectmen's meeting to order for Tuesday, February 19, 2019. As required by open meeting law, you are hereby informed that the town will be video and audiotaping as well as live broadcasting this public meeting. In addition, anyone in the audience who plans to video or audiotape this meeting must notify the chairman prior to the start of the meeting. Hearing nobody, please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance. United States of America, through our Lord and the which of Sam's, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Is there anybody for weekly briefing?
Don's been briefed, so he let me go.
Carolyn Carey, Community Center Cultural Center. I just wanted to bring your attention that Art Week is coming very quickly. The deadline for submissions to go in the state advertising brochure is on February 22nd, so Erica and Brian have been working diligently with that. We have quite a few of our own artists and people from outside. We're working with the Cape Verdean organization. But I really wanted to invite all of the public, that person included, to come join us on March 16th outside of the cultural center building. We're going to be spelling out the word "Art Week" using people and bodies, and so if you would like to join us, that's outside the cultural center to, so we can use it as part of our publicity for Art Week, and that's on March 16th at 11 o'clock. Great. Thank you, Carolyn. Anybody else for weekly briefing? Okay. Anybody for public comments and announcements? Nobody? We'll go to the consent agenda. Ed?
Yes. I'd like to present the consent agenda and move approval of the items thereon, including the minutes of the December 17 regular session meeting, the January 7 regular session meeting, and the January 14 regular session meeting, and approve an application by Multiple Squares Society, Greater New England Chapter, for the MS Bike Way, Bike Getaway, to be held on June 30, and to accept the resignation of Lorraine Bossy as a member of the Harwich Cultural Council effective immediately.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Moving on to new business. Good evening, John. Pet burial ground eminent domain taking ramifications.
Good evening.
How are you?
I'm good, thank you. So, Madam Chair, if you'd like, I can go through my email opinion that I think may be in the packet, so maybe I can just explain some of the background and reasoning for my opinion, and of course, any questions, I'd be more than happy to attempt to answer them.
Thank you, John. Michael?
John, just, I asked you a question at the beginning of the meeting. I'm just gonna point out the, or ask, I guess, pet burial ground eminent domain taking ramifications is a pretty specific line item, and I would ask your opinion if any other conversation based on material that's in the packet violates open meeting law.
Well, you know, we always have to be cognizant, obviously, of the open meeting law, and I think that because my opinion was included in the packet, that we should really stick to the four corners of that opinion. I don't know if you were concerned about other things that might come up, but what's in my opinion, it was really an attempt to answer specific questions that I believe the select board had, and I think we should limit the discussion to what's in the agenda packet.
Thank you, John.
Okay. So, you know, the specific question, as I understand it, was generated because there was some indication that a citizen's petition was going to be filed to authorize the sale of the land, and I think that generated a question from the board. Can you even sell land that was taken by eminent domain? And the answer, the simple answer to that question is yes, you can, under the law. Now, this land was acquired through an eminent domain taking. The town meeting authorization said for open space and general municipal purposes. The order of taking itself just said general municipal purposes. So, we have concluded that the land, when it was acquired, was acquired for general municipal purposes. And then in 2016, there was a town meeting vote that essentially dedicated this land as a pet crematory and pet burial ground, and...
John, if, Madam Chair, if I...
I think the term cemetery was actually used.
Okay, just to clarify your last position, general municipal purposes would allow us to sell it, forgetting about what happened in 2016?
No.
The first taking, would that allow us to sell that land?
No, because in order to sell land, you need a specific town meeting authorization. Now, when it was acquired for general municipal purposes, you don't have to go through the transfer vote language that I'm going to talk about, but you would've still needed a town meeting vote to sell, to dispose of town property.
Thank you.
Okay? But that's not what happened, obviously. In 2016, town meeting by a two-thirds vote voted to dedicate this land as a pet cemetery, and once that happened, that vote is what I call self-executing. As soon as that vote took place, the land was transferred to the custody of the cemetery commissioners and was held for pet, a pet crematory and a pet cemetery. And that, as I said, is self-effectuating, so legal rights vested at that time in 2016. So, if we now move forward to 2019, if the town wished to sell that land, or to dedicate it to any other use, or to transfer it back to general municipal use, there's a minimum of a two-step process, and if you're going to sell it, there's a three-step process. So, let's just talk about the sale. So, the law is very explicit that when land is held for a specific municipal purpose, which this land is, the first step under Chapter 40, Section 15A, is that the custodial board, and that's the board that was given custody of this land by town meeting, which in this case was the cemetery commission, that custodial board has to vote by a majority vote that the land is no longer needed for that specific municipal purpose. The second step in the process is for town meeting to vote by a two-thirds vote to change the purpose for which the land is held, from one specific purpose to another. And the courts have said that sale, that selling land is a specific municipal purpose as well. So, you've seen these warrant articles on town meeting warrants before, where it will say something to the effect, to see if the town will vote to transfer a particular piece of property under the custody of so-and-so, or some town board, currently held for a particular purpose, to the Board of Selectmen, to be held for the purpose of sale or disposition, and then, and to further authorize the Board of Selectmen to sell said land. And you've seen those before. I'm not sure anybody really focused on that language, but that language has been carefully drafted in order to address specifically General Laws, Chapter 40, Section 15A, and the case that I've cited in my opinion, which is Harris versus the Town of Whalen, where the court said very clearly that holding land for the purpose of sale is a change in use, and that requires the two-thirds vote of town meeting. Okay? Now, that case also said that although the statute contemplates that the custodial board votes first, that it's surplus, meaning the cemetery commission, and then it goes to town meeting, the court in that case said the sequence is really immaterial, that you can have the town meeting vote first, and then you can have the custodial board declare its surplus, but both of those actions are necessary. And again, it's self-effectuating. Once that vote takes place, the land is transferred to whatever purpose and to whatever board town meeting designated in the two-thirds vote. And then when it comes to the disposition of land, there's a third element, and that is only, town meeting can only authorize the selectmen to sell land. It's the same thing as an appropriation. Town meeting can appropriate the money, but it's up to the chief executive authority, in this case, the Board of Selectmen, to actually sign a deed to sell it. You don't have to do that, it's not shall, it's may. So, those would be the three steps that you would, that you would have to follow. And I believe I also mentioned, of course, because I'm sort of a procurement nut, but you obviously would have to comply with Chapter 30B if you were selling town land by issuing an RFP. So, that in a nutshell is my opinion, and I'm happy to answer any questions the board may have.
Thank you, John. Questions from the board? Larry?
No, I think he answered my questions. I didn't understand completely that the sequence wasn't important. So, we could, it could get approved at town meeting, and if the cemetery board decides not dispose of it, it, nothing would happen.
That's correct. That's correct.
Michael?
I think the only way that you could deal with that is through some kind of special legislation. I've never seen that done. I've never seen the general court approve that kind of a special act. It would require a town meeting authorization to do that, but absent that, which I think would be pretty extraordinary, the Harris v. Whalen case, the Supreme Judicial Court said quite clearly that you can reverse the order.
Ed, do you have any questions?
Just a general question, both on the vote to transfer purpose and the vote to sale. If in the case of transferring purpose, the custodial board doesn't declare it surplus, or in the case of vote to sell property, the Board of Selectmen doesn't put it up for sale, is there a time limit or a life on the authorization of those articles, so they, 20 years later, it could be taken up?
In theory, yes.
Okay.
In theory, but there's no time limit. It's not like, well, even a bond authorization theoretically is good forever. Things change, however, and, you know...
I know. Earlier on, we sold a piece of property on the West Harwich Line, which is now Stonewood has developed into, but that had been, that authorization to sell that property had been passed by town meeting in the late '90s, and we didn't get around to putting it on the market until...
And that's fine.
Okay.
That's fine.
That was always a nagging question that I never asked at the time.
Now, unless somehow town meeting places a limit on it, but I've never seen that, actually, to be honest with you.
Don?
Actually, nothing, except to ask you the question is, is there anything in writing that suggests that the sales part is even up for grabs at this town meeting?
No.
Okay, that's it.
Nothing that I've seen.
I do think, for clarity's sake, at one board meeting, there was a discussion about sale. We had people come in, talk about sale, so we sent a request for an opinion to John for that. Subsequent to that, we now have a article that has been submitted, a petition article, that does not mention the word "sale," and the article just mentions "transfer of custody."
Okay. Thank you. So, no other questions?
To be technical, Chris, the article is to rescind the prior vote.
If you want to elaborate on that, I was trying to keep it simple.
Yeah, well, you know, that, the issue there is going to be that because it's self-effectuating, that land has transferred, so you can't rescind the vote, that's self-effectuating. I say in my subsequent follow-up email to Chris, I think certainly you could look at a motion to actually transfer it back again. It would be up to the moderator, as it always is, to determine whether that kind of a motion would be within the scope of the article.
Right. Otherwise, it remains with cemetery, unless cemetery, right?
Yes, correct.
Okay. So, I don't have any further questions. Thank you very much, John.
Okay, great.
B, appointment of attorney.
You want to ask if there's any comments, questions from the crowd?
I'll take a few. We have a lot, we have a heavy agenda with a lot of warrant articles on it, so, you know, limit it to two minutes.
One is, I think, related to what Don just asked. The taxpayer filed petition, the intent of the taxpayer filed petition was to have the land transferred out of the care and custody and control of the cemetery commission, back to the Board of Selectmen, so that alternatives that better suit the taxpayer could be explored. No mention of sale. If sale came up at that point in time, then, you know, further research and discussion could occur at that point in time. In my understanding, that you're saying that there's no problem with that, or there is a problem with that?
I'm sorry, sir, with what? I'm not, a problem with what?
The taxpayer article.
No, there's a problem with her.
And the...
So, just, maybe to, the way the article was submitted, says to rescind and go back to what used to be, and we've been advised that you can't do that, so you can't...
Well, it wasn't rescind and go back to the way it used to be, it was...
If you'd let me...
Yeah, so, you're asking the question, he's answering.
I'm trying to help you here.
Sure.
So, because you can't go back and change the past, what we've been advised is you can, you can alter the current. So, at town meeting, we would prepare a motion, and we certainly can prepare a motion for you that would accomplish this, whether the town moderator accepts it or not, is up to the moderator, but the motion would read that as of town meeting, that would change from cemetery to, back to selectmen's use. So, it's just that retroactive element that has been ruled...
So, just the wording, I mean, just the wording, I think it was, I don't have it in front of me, but rescind the vote that was, rescind the action that was taken regarding Article 57, that's, that's the only problem?
The rescind part, that's not, not appropriate, for lack of a better term.
Okay.
But to make clear, it's not just a question of transferring it back, the cemetery commission would still have to declare it surplus.
So, two approvals necessary, town meeting and cemetery.
Okay. I don't quite understand the cemetery commission declaring it surplus. So, so there's no, no funding ever approved for this cemetery, no funding ever approved for the crematory? So, if no funding is ever approved for this land at all, then what you're saying is the cemetery commission remains in care and custody and control of this land? Period? End of statement?
Yes.
Yes.
I just asked you. Time long.
That doesn't seem right, but, okay. Is there, is there a way the, on board could get a second opinion from a good land use attorney on this, or, or would a taxpayer, would a taxpayer group have to get a second opinion and present that to you?
Chris, do you want to? I don't know the need to get a second opinion or signing state case law.
Yeah, I, I mean, KP-LR is a competent counsel, I mean, I don't see the need to do that unless the board so desires.
No, I don't.
I think this way, even, being presented, it's truly black and white.
Right.
I don't think, well, I disagree. I don't think it's black and white, so. Interpretation of the law isn't either.
So...
And can I just ask a third question?
So, hold on.
Sure.
One minute, Larry's talking, and again, we're gonna limit the discussion, as I said before, to two minutes, and we're getting close, so, Larry?
No, it seemed like there were three steps that were outlined for us that seemed fairly straightforward to me.
I understand the three steps, yeah.
Michael?
No, my only comment is I think that this board has supported this project. I think we've supported this project right along. I think one member of the board hasn't, and I think all votes have been four to one. I think if the board wanted to change its position and not support the project, and then vote separate legal counsel, then that, that's a concept, but not one that I would vote, not one that I would support.
Oh, and we're stating case law from the state of Massachusetts, so I think that, not to speak for the board, but I think we're, we're comfortable in the decision, so...
Well, I mean, it's clear to a number of people that the members of the board have supported this project. It's also clear the members of the board aren't quite willing to listen to opposing facts, and I think the taxpayers deserve an opinion too, so...
So, hold on, I'll go to Don, and then I'll respond. Don?
Yeah, rather than go down a rabbit hole tonight, the fact is, you heard the opinion, he's not saying it can't be taken up, it won't be discussed. He's saying that you're going to have to go to the town moderator and see if the motion can perfect the article, which means nothing can be done tonight, other than just having this discussion, because you're gonna require another step on your part.
Okay. And is there, is there a way to submit or amend, we have up until two days before the meeting, or one day before the meeting, to put an article in, so...
So, the, so, the warrant article is simply a warning to the voters of what action town meeting is contemplating. The sponsors of this article can make a main motion that is different than the words in the warrant article, as long as the moderator says it's within the scope. So, Chris indicated that we, if, if it's the board's pleasure, we can certainly work with the petitioners and suggest the form of a main motion, and if the moderator says, yeah, that's fine, then town meeting will have an opportunity to vote, excuse me, on what I believe was the intent of the article.
Thank you, John. Chris, did you have anything you wanted to, okay, thank you.
Who would we work with to do that?
Just, I will, just, my role as the administrator is to kind of make sure and facilitate the town meeting run smoothly, so we actually, administration, we prepare the motions, so it's not unusual for us to work with a citizen petition, to sit down with you and prepare those motions.
Okay.
So, we can, we can arrange a time and do that.
Okay, thank you.
Michael? Hold on, the gentleman behind you wants to get up to speak. Please identify yourself.
Good evening, Bob Pinedosi, Harwich Port. Good evening. Just a point of clarification for our attorney, that, and I might be incorrect, but my understanding was the land was not taken by eminent domain, it was actually a land transfer, is that correct?
It was perfected by...
It was perfected by, by that, but it was not taken, this is the, it was not taken by eminent domain.
It was taken.
It was. Okay.
This is ordered, taken, recorded, and registered.
Okay. But it wasn't a land swap?
I believe there was, there was a, there was an issue as to the title of the land, and so, town meeting authorized the taking, and the taking was perfected, and it recorded and registered.
Okay.
And that taking said it's acquired for general municipal purposes.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Michael?
Yeah, I just, I can't help myself. I have to comment on Brian's comments, the last speaker. To continue to say that the board doesn't listen to the taxpayers, we listen to the taxpayers. There's a whole other side that doesn't advertise on Facebook that supports this project. The town meeting vote last year supported this project, so to say that we're not listening to the taxpayers, this has been going on, and I know that the original intent in what you were doing was changed by recommendation of a board member, but I have 150 pages of conversation by you guys talking about selling this land. So, that may have changed for town meeting purposes, but we don't have the ability to snipe on Facebook like you do, so, so the rest of the public understands, we are listening to the taxpayers, all of the taxpayers. Some of them are silent and don't write it, but we are listening to the taxpayers.
Thank you, Michael. And I would actually point out that the reason that this is on the agenda is to have this discussion in an open and public environment. The fact of the matter is, we're giving this information so people understand the steps involved. It's not a simple thing to just say, we're not gonna do this. You've heard our attorney speak, you've heard the steps involved, and ultimately, it will go back to town meeting, where the decision will be made by the taxpayers. And the more people there, the more people involved in town politics, town policy decision-making, rather than, as you say, talking about it on Facebook. You have an open forum to discuss it. If you have something new to say, but you need to go to the podium...
Yes, I could follow up, Mike. I don't, honestly, Mike, I don't think we're sniping, and I think, you're, no, wait a minute, please. No, I think, there's certainly, there's certainly, there's certainly a lot of energy and dissent about the, about the project, and I think that's, and it, and I know that there's a particular segment on, on Facebook, or whatever, and I don't even use Facebook, that are very outspoken about it. I think the point that I like to make, and all due respect, I think all the work that you all do, I think is incredible, you know, day, night, you know, week after week, and I respect all of that. But having said that, that there's, I can't tell you how many people, we asked, in three days, we had 150 signatures. Not all those people that are, that you call sniping responded to us and say, we just don't like the idea of this. Not that we don't like the idea of a pet cemetery, there's probably universal support for that. It's the process and the way you've gone about bringing this forward, and, and the lack of due diligence, and how this thing is going to be built. And that starts with the pet crematory, and it continues with the pet cemetery. Again, you know, I don't have a problem with a pet cemetery. I do have a problem with taking a million-dollar piece of property and, and converting it to something that is gonna take years and years and years, and we see revenues, we don't see costs. And I think that's the point, and that's, that's the Achilles of this particular project. There, you know, we've got a one-sided, we have a beautiful picture. Here's the pet cemetery. There's no, there's no, what are the costs to build it? What's the build-out cost to, to create this image? There's, there's none of that. So, I guess, my point is that, forget about the sniping, there's just a lot of folks that are not sniping, that are, that have signed that, that article, that are just opposed to it from, you know, for so many reasons, and the one reason, they're not opposed to the pet cemetery. Find another place for it, utilize this land, you know, take the money, you know, do whatever you need to do with it, and have a tax revenue going forward for the next, how many years? But this proposal is just cost, cost, cost going forward, and I hate to say this, but we're just building the size of government in Harwich, and that's, that's what, that's the, you know, I think that's the end point of this. And I wish you would look at that more critically, and, and not get so distracted by the, Michael Strum, the sniping, and there's, there's some of that, but there's a lot of folks out there that are not sniping, that are just concerned. Thank you.
Well, and I would point out that, you know, once the board was made aware of issues, that we did respond, and we did address it, and so ultimately, here we are, having a discussion on the proper route to bring it back. So, again, to the point for the board, we are responding, we are listening, and we have, and ultimately, I was at town meeting in 2016 when this came up. I did not vote for it, I did not support it, but the cemetery commission has the property and had a project. Any kind of issue that came up after, that was brought to the board, the board addressed. So, I'll be clear, in the sense that the property currently resides with the cemetery commission. Now, we're discussing what are the options. I think the board has done its due diligence, and I think if the taxpayers want to do their due diligence, they'll show up at town meeting. That's how it works, so, thank you. Two more speakers, and we have a, like I said, we have a very full agenda here, so...
Patricia Parity, Harwich. I just would like to say, in regards to being characterized as sniping, I think we should be appreciative of democracy and action. This is democracy, that we have the right to express our opinion. You may think it's sniping. One way in this day and age that opinions are expressed is via Facebook and social media, and also showing up here at town selectman meetings. And I think we should be appreciated and not castigated, and not looked down upon, and not referring to the number of years that we... and not referring to the number of years that we have resided in Harwich. My vote as a three-year citizen of Harwich is every good as bit as Mr. McCaskill's, who grew up here and his parents grew up here. I would just like to register that opinion.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Just, Bob, thank you for yours, and you're right, 150 people are not sniping. Democracy is not a Facebook site, as it is illegal for the Board of Selectmen to be on there and responding. That is not democracy. This is democracy, and thank you for being here. And your vote, whether it's one year, three year, or 40 years, equally is important, and I've never said otherwise, ever. And my parents didn't grow up here, but thank you for being here, but Facebook is not democracy at all.
Thank you. Can you identify yourself?
Yes. Good evening, Madam Chairman and Board. I'm Cindy Eldredge, and I'm the Chairman of the Cemetery Commission. And I guess I should say I'm lifelong resident, but I am. I fully support Robin Kelly, our administrator, and the Harwich Pet Memorial Pet Burial Grounds in Walking Park. And our commission backs her 100 percent. I'd just like to say that the Cemetery Commission will not ever consider this surplus property. The pet burial ground will come to life. And to put everybody's mind at rest, the crematory will not come to life, so you can take that off your mind. Thank you.
Thank you. Last comment.
Bob Freitas, it's not really a comment on anything, the gentleman that was worried about the procedure. My point was, he could just get the case laws he's citing, and a lot of them are really easy to read, and I'm sure he's right. But if he wanted to research on his own, he could just get the case laws, read them, and maybe be satisfied.
Thank you. Okay, on to the appointment of attorney, oh, thank you, John, sorry, I didn't mean to just.
Thank you, have a good evening.
Thank you.
I hope you get out of here decently.
Hopefully. Sorry, on to B, new business. Appointment of Attorney William August as special counsel for the upcoming cable license franchise renewal. Vote to approve and authorize a town administrator to sign.
So, Madam Chair, just the background behind this. We are in the process of a three-year time window to renew the cable license agreement with Comcast. And just for folks at home, we have one vendor that actually provides a service. And by federal law, we cannot engage in talking or negotiating about content or price, which really leaves us to customer service. But it is very much a specialty. Comcast is a fairly large corporation, and there is a law firm, one of the law firms, that specializes in these cable licensing renewals, Bill August and Peter Epstein. I've been doing this for a while, and I've actually used both partners in this firm over my time in the profession. I think Bill August, in this case, is a competent counsel that will do a good job for us in the renewal process, but extremely regulated, and I think that it's appropriate. In terms of the funding source, this would come out of cable funds. So, there are sufficient cable funds to cover the anticipated cost of this.
Thank you, Chris. Any questions from the board? Don?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Question I have is, is this even an avenue that's open to us? I mean, if we hire the lawyer, because the FCC decision is a recent one, that narrowed down what it was. It used to be just content or price, but they also said that there wasn't any obligation on the part of the cable companies to provide local access television anywhere.
Yeah, that's not, FCC is contemplating making that change, that change has not yet occurred. So, actually, it may behoove us to try to negotiate this sooner than later, to try to get that accomplished, in case that regulatory change comes down.
Comes down, right, yeah.
And I'd like to move that we appoint Epstein and August LLP as our attorneys of the matter of our cable negotiations.
Second.
And approve and authorize town administrator to sign.
Yep, I still second it.
Moved and seconded. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye. Thank you.
Thank you. Old business, the wastewater project cost discussion.
Chris, I see this is on the agenda at the end on the town administrator report also. Do we want to discuss this now, or do we want to discuss this in the end?
You know, my suggestion would be, maybe, because there is a lot in the focus on the warrant, you know, maybe we can group a lot of these together and have a more comprehensive wastewater discussion at a future, at a future meeting, if that's okay with the board. Obviously, we're trying to get material in front of the board that you had asked for. We do have material in regards to DHY and the cost implications of, if we go down that road, what that means, and re-sequencing. I think it would be better to have a comprehensive discussion than a piecemeal discussion.
Don?
Thank you, Madam Chair. If we have that discussion, I would like it to be agended so that we can actually have the discussion. It's limited here to wastewater project costs. It actually, it's not just the cost, it's the timing, it's the governance, I mean, there's a bunch of things that are going on. So, if it could be broadened for the agenda so that we can have the other parts of the discussion legitimately in an open meeting.
Well, we can certainly do that. The reason this came back on was the increased costs that you had brought up, that you wanted to have a discussion.
I have, and the information, yeah, no, thank you. And some of the information's in the packet, but I specifically asked David Young for the detail of how he got to where he got to. And I went back through the comprehensive wastewater management plan that we sold to the town and was voted, and it was 40 years, 240 million. Last meeting, because it was in the packet at 40 years and 300 million, I wanted to know where the net $60 million came from. And his case that he made to me, or made to the board, which is in the packet, doesn't really do anything for me. There's no real numbers in there that matter to me. But he owes us, the town, an explanation as to where we're going with this, not just where we're at today. And I also want to discuss the information flow to our wastewater support committee, because we're getting things that they're not getting, they're getting in third hand, so I agree, a broad discussion. But I, Chris, I'll send you what I'm looking for. I want his math, how he got there.
Yeah, well, I mean, when I was looking through this, you know, I felt like I was following the numbers in terms of an increase. I'm not saying to the dollar, but the overall increased cost in terms of percentages and inflation, et cetera, from 2013 to 2018. So, I didn't, I will say I didn't pull out my calculator, but that's the cost I was following.
I did some of that, using the index, cost index, I checked a couple of his numbers, and they're okay. My problem, quite frankly, is the estimates on building a construction plant is, as far as I can tell, really rough, because you don't know, you know, you look at comparables kind of thing, but who builds a plant like we do? So, the baseline, maybe that might be what you're referring to, the 240. And then you look at and say, it's over 40 years, so it's going to be a very rough estimate.
Right.
And so, we can concentrate on the next couple phases, and concentrate on DHY, because that's coming up, and what that's going to cost would be my interest.
Michael?
And to be honest with you, mentioning to me, engineering indexes means absolutely nothing. An explanation from our engineer, as far as the CWMP, I guess the big question is, was that an estimate? Because why are we, and what in the CWMP, I went through it today, and couldn't find where he talked about inflation over five years, or whatever number we're talking about, and having this project jump from 240 to 300. And I think that the public deserves to know what it's going to be 15 years from now. And as we continue to vote on these projects, what's the actual number's going to be, without just mentioning indexes, engineering indexes, that you two may understand.
But that's fine, I mean, we can bring it back.
Yeah, I think we can bring it back, and so we fully understand.
Right, the numbers, what I was responding to was, there are numbers of the breakdown in terms of increased costs within the packet, is all I'm saying. And the reason this was agended was because we were specifically talking about that increase. But we can certainly bring it back in a consolidated discussion, DHY, this, and any other materials. But I think if you have other specific requests, like you do, if you have more beyond what you originally gave to me, then send them to me and Chris, so that we make sure that what goes in that packet is accurate. Don?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Actually, this is on CDM Smith. I mean, it's not up to us to ferret into this and figure out. I go to these meetings with Larry every month, we've had discussions, and we're not getting the answer there any more than we're getting the answer here. I want the assumptions that he used to arrive at these figures. Because I know I had asked the specific question a couple of months ago, relative to the inflation factor for building a sewage plant as compared to just a general construction project, and is there something that we should know about that? And his comment was, yeah, it doesn't ride along with the economic cycles like building the fire station would, or just a standard building. He said that this has loaded into it an inflation factor of its own, and it goes up linearly, it never goes down. That's what he said at our meeting. So, the only way to get to the truth of this is if he's here to answer some of these things, because if we're restricting ourselves to that which we know to question, we're losing sight of the bigger picture.
We should have all answers, questions answered, that's clear to me.
Yeah, and we won't know what he's going to say until he says it. It's one of those, you can't know what you don't know if you don't know it things. He's got to be here so we can ask him anything we want about that.
Okay, so, again, if you'll, we'll have David come back for the more comprehensive discussion, but I think in all fairness, too, if you have specific questions that you feel aren't being answered at the wastewater meetings, those questions should be, you know.
They're out there, he knows them.
Logged in to the board, though, too, so we're all aware of them, and then we can make sure that they get answered by David the next time he's here, so.
And I'd actually like to go a little bit further, that's why I was saying that this should be broadened, because we're at the juncture where governance is up for grabs again. And we are going to be asked, as a board, to weigh in on how we want to view this. And we were originally sold, you could only have the model that was used by Mansfield, Norton, and Foxborough. And we didn't want to upset the apple cart, because the legislation was going through, and it had to be identical so that we had a fair chance of it getting through. It did not get through the last session, it had to start all the way back at the beginning of committee. And we have the opportunity to have discussion about whether we do or don't want to have the budget cycle governed by the combined boards of selectmen each year, or whether it's totally advisory and we have no input after we vote the thing. That needs to be aired, too, because eventually, all three boards are going to be asked to make a, take a position on that. And I think that he needs to be here to tell us what our options are.
So, again, we'll have David come to the next meeting. Well, I don't know if he can come to the next meeting, but we'll have him on in the next couple weeks to have this discussion, and combine it with the DHY discussion. Ed?
But if you have, I urge you, if you do have specific questions, whether you've asked him in the past, or they're new, put it in writing and get it to him, so he can be prepared.
Right.
Because it's a waste of time if he shows up, and we start asking him questions, and it requires that he prepare a level of detail that he just generally doesn't carry around in his head.
Right, that's right. I mean, I think documenting any questions we have ahead of time serves him, and serves the board, and serves the taxpayers, so.
This has been going on for numerous meetings.
I understand that, but if you're saying, if you are saying you have specific questions that are not getting answered, then document those questions so we can assure that you get an answer. I mean, that's the point of having him back. He was just here a couple weeks ago. So, if those questions were out there, and he could have answered them then, we don't know, so let's just document.
You're missing the point. He has had those meetings with the other three, with the other towns and us. He's been asked them specifically in two subsequent meetings. He's not only not answering us here, he's not answering those, Larry has been trying to ferret out this for two months now.
So, again, I don't think, I'm saying anything that I'm not understanding the point.
Just answer the question again. To follow up Don's comment on the legislation that was, you know, the agreement. In addition to Dave, could you ferret out or give some more details on, from bond counsel, on what's acceptable or not? Because I still have questions in my mind. We're going to need to get in detail, so some of the issues raised, that certainly would affect my opinion of how we would go forward.
And again, we can have the discussion on whether the language can be changed, I mean, you know, with DHY. So, let's have those discussions.
Well, I think we were told the language can be changed, but my concern is, and we got one opinion, but I'd like to have, I need to have more comfort, that it wouldn't affect how easy it is to sell bonds, because we have to pay for this.
Right, right. Ed?
You know, from the meeting on Friday, that's the takeaway I got from the issue is the sort of controlling opinion is that a bond counsel, if you create a structure that you can't sell bonds on, then you've shot yourself in the foot. And that's, and that's not something that Dave can answer.
I'm asking him to. That's a separate question, I'm just saying we need to have that information.
You know.
I think that that actually came up when we had the previous discussion as well, about bonds.
I do think, in fairness, you know, there was a concept that was raised at last Friday's meeting that was a concept that we asked to have that put in writing. And once that concept gets put in writing, then it can be vetted through counsel. So, I don't want people to think that this is something that's been in the works for a long time. There was three towns, three different opinions, three different elements, if you would. And we had one of the towns raised an issue about wanting to change some of the governance piece. So, you know, we asked to have that fleshed out, and once we get that fleshed out, we'll get bond counsel's opinion. I think all three towns use the same bond counsel, so that's good news from that perspective.
Okay, thank you, Chris. So, we'll bring that back.
Yeah.
Round Cove Road potholes discussion. We have the pictures that we were given.
They're so pretty, I thought we were looking for a new cover for the town report.
So, I asked that this be put on the agenda, and it's simply to ask the board's authority for Chris to instruct the DPW to fix these potholes, and make it safe for the people of town that are driving that road, as well as emergency vehicles.
Any discussion from the board? Don?
They're pretty convincing pictures.
If, I've got no problem with them remediating the road within the footprint. But the last time we got asked something, that road got busted out much wider than we were asked to do. If this is just simply filling some holes in, then that's fine.
Michael?
The only, the only thing I would say to that, we have a DPW director that has a highway manager that knows how to fix roads. I'm not asking that the road be widened, but I am asking that we can create the road so that the drainage goes off into the woods, and that we don't end up here in another month asking permission to fill the same holes. So, I agree with Don, I'm not asking that the wide be, road be widened, but I'm asking that we give him the authority to do what's necessary to fill these holes for our emergency vehicles and the people in town to drive this road into the state park.
Ed? Oh, sorry, did you have a comment on?
No.
Just, I have had discussions with Lincoln, the DPW director, you know, he anticipates, you know, it's a fairly small project, just to fill it in, you know, do what needs to be done. So, probably about a day's work, I think, if I remember, and not a heck of a lot of resources in terms of that. But obviously, the labor would be town labor, so there's no cost, if you would, other than the town labor piece. I don't want to, I know Larry will be on.
Don't use that term.
But we wouldn't have an outside vendor do it, we would do the work ourselves internally.
Larry, did you have a question or comment?
No, I mean, we should fill the potholes.
I was wondering if Link had, just because, if we've got other potholes in town, too, like this, that we should have some type of, you know, listing of what else he thinks needs to be fixed. Because if we're going to fix them here, we should be looking at potholes wherever else they are in town. Does he have anything like that, an ongoing, oh, Link, I didn't see.
He is here, so I, you know, I would share with you, though, that, you know, there are times, in which I just got today, in which we had a culvert collapse.
Yeah, so.
So, we're looking at a significant cost to make sure we preserve one of our roadways in town. So, you know, I think small projects like this is really kind of a routine maintenance. But, you know, I'd hate to get into trying to, we have over, you know, 200 miles of roadway in town, and handpicking certain areas probably isn't advisable. But in this circumstance, I don't think it's a tremendous amount of work, and the work can be done. But in terms of priority, I mean, I don't, he had the culvert work on his to-do list, but nature didn't give us the opportunity to do it on a timely fashion.
Hi, Link.
Madam Chair, Link Hooper, DPW Director. This is on the agenda, I was asked to fix this. This is a very minor, and I mean minor, project, probably half a day at most with a loader. As you may recall, I fixed another portion of this road going down to Hoxnest, and I ended up with a couple of public records requests, and a whole bunch of email. ended up with a couple of public records requests and a whole bunch of email. No good deed goes unpunished. I, I really wanted the board's consent to do this. I also want you to be aware that when I paved that section around Cove Road, I had a public meeting and it was, it was more wanted it paved than not and we did it simply out of ma- out of maintenance concerns because we were over there grading this thing once, twice a month. They were very clear when we did it, they only want, they wanted the pavement ending at the last house, which is exactly what we did and we made no further improvements. I suspect you might hear from a couple of the people down there, maybe 20 houses on that section of road about it once we improve it.
Okay. Don?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Link, you weren't here for the beginning part of this, at least I don't think you were, when this first came up on the agenda tonight.
Been here all night.
Yeah, I've been here all night. So, I just need to hear from you, what do you mean by grading and paving?
Two separate issues.
This particular?
The fixing this is very minor, probably half a day's worth of work, a day at most, very, no cost. Materials we have.
What are you doing, not how much does it cost?
What are we doing?
Yeah.
We would grade, you dig out the potholes and grade the road up. If you just fill them out, if you just fill them up with material, they come back. So, you have to do like Mr. McCaskill said and make so sure the water runs somewhere else off of the road so it doesn't reoccur. I drove my staff car down there to take the pictures that are in front of you. I, I mean, it is, a couple of them are pretty big and should be fixed. However, we've not been in the habit or past practice of improving every cartway we have in town. We have a bunch of them in town. The other section, you couldn't drive a pickup truck down going down to Hawksnest, that was really, really bad.
All I'm driving at is if a repair is filling and grading, that's one thing. If it's changing the footprint, that's quite another.
No, I, I don't believe the, the request has nothing to do with changing the footprint, staying within the 18-foot right-of-way that goes down there.
As you can see, it's not all 18 feet.
Yeah. I know, we're not, we're not, I, I plan to do nothing more than fix.
Footprint, I meant not the right-of-way, but the footprint is going to be maintained in the same manner, right?
Well, actually, the right-of-way is not a whole lot bigger than what you see there, but we.
I've been driving it since 1999, so I understand. It, it's always been a risk. I never understood how anybody with a huge SUV could even get down it. But on the other hand, it's part of a network that the state bought and the town bought and kind of have an interest in it not looking like a highway or a boulevard. So, all I'm saying is, is this, if this is just repairing and it's not going to widen, we'd just kind of like to know that upfront.
That's correct. Just repairing, no widening.
Michael?
I just restate my, my, my last comment. DPW Director, Highway Director, we're just asking them to fix the road that's already there. If you have to make a kick off the side of the road, I don't want you to hear from Don later because you're trying to drain the water. I know what he's saying. We're not asking to widen the road, we're asking to fix it. And this is quite different than any other cartway in town. This goes into our state park, so.
Understood.
Do you need a motion or can we just consensus?
Why don't we do a motion because it may not be unanimous?
Chair.
Okay.
I move that we ask the Administrator of Officer to direct the Director of Highways and Maintenance to.
DPW.
Fix the pot, the potholes on this section of Round Cove Road.
Second.
You, you meant DPW, right? There's no highways.
Moved and seconded.
Whatever.
Moved and seconded. Any further discussion?
No.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Student.
Okay, unanimous.
No, it's not.
Oh, did you? I'm sorry, I didn't, I didn't hear you say.
Technically unanimous.
Even when I say opposed, I ignore.
That's why you run the meeting.
When, when, when this thing's dry and not all full of water, I've gotten my peas down it.
That's it. That's pretty impressive.
I think he's going to find my own beetle.
But it's possible.
I'm going to find my own beetle at the, at the bottom of one of these.
Draft warrant article review. Start this.
Madam Chair, maybe just to offer, the suggestion would be for the next two meetings would be to determine which articles would go on the warrant. We do not have, as Selectman McMahon has brought up last time, the, the petition articles are petition articles, they're going to be on irrespective. So, just so folks say, oh, I don't see it, I don't see it, it will be included in the, the March 4th. I believe there's about 10 of those articles. These are all the other articles that we have for inclusion in the warrant. It would be my suggestion that the warrant is finalized and will be submitted for publication by, I think our deadline date here is March 4th to, to kind of finalize the, the warrant itself so we can distribute that around. At that time, between March, during the month of March, the deliberations in terms of whether the selectmen support or don't support any of these articles, those determinations would be made. So, for, for instance, the town operating budget, that may change slightly between now and, and when we get to the final numbers. So, voting to have the operating budget on there is advisable. Voting the final numbers, once the final numbers become available, would certainly be whether the board supports or not supports, the budget would be done at a later date. But just to kind of lay out, the, the recommendation would be to go through for incorporation and discussion at, at town meeting, which articles should go on. The goal would be as many as we can get through tonight for incorporation, whatever's on the list that isn't voted tonight, we put on for next week with the idea that we would have everything ready to go for the, the March 4th and get the final warrant in good shape.
Right. So, we had, we were talking about earlier, just to say, basically, we will either approve something, not approve.
This is just for inclusion in the warrant?
No, right, include, sorry. But I'm saying, in terms of our actions tonight, are either to include it, to pull it, or we're holding it to bring it back. So, three different actions.
Correct.
Yeah, just to be clear from what we discussed. Ed?
Well, to get us off, I'd move that we include the customary articles one through three and five through eight.
Okay, so one through three being the town officers.
Just because we didn't put numbers on, so the town officers' report, the elected officials.
Right.
The town operating budget, the Monomoy budget, the Cape Cod Tech budget and the Water Department budget.
Your motion to include on the warrant?
Yes.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Michael?
So, just as a formality, I mean, we are approving, I know that we can tweak it, but we're approving an operating budget on Article Five. And that definitely is going to change.
And, and.
So, do you want to put a caveat that says?
No, I'm, my motion is just to include.
The article.
The article.
And the article spells out the amount, so we're all clear.
I don't see.
Well, but my understanding was, hey, that we can change the amount.
I mean, you know, in any detail.
Just clarify that, Mike.
Prior to our position.
Right. In other words, to tweak them.
We can, right. Prior to the final.
So, comes back to saying how, originally, we're saying either we're going to include it or we're going to hold it to bring it back or we're pulling it because we're not, we don't feel it should be included. So, that.
I'm fine with, I'm fine with one through three. If, once you get to Article Five, there should be more language in the motion because there's a number there.
Right.
And yes, we all agree that we can change the number, but the motion is included in the warrant and that's as written, I would imagine, unless the warrant, unless the article says something different. So, I think the money ones, accepting Article Three, I would vote to put it in the, in the warrant, not in final form or any other manner of language, but.
Larry?
Chris, let me ask you a question. Where we have language in Article Five, the 502, for instance, what we're going on tonight, can we pull that out and add it later?
I think that.
Because we'll have the language, we have the motion, the article language and put the number in later?
I think that the, and I, I don't have my budget calendar up, I think what the intent here is to get everything on the warrant so that way we can send it to FinCom on March 2nd. You have your budget hearing. Numbers will be revised prior to the, the warrant book going out, but we need to have something in which to send around to people saying this is what the warrant includes. So, the numbers can't change. My, my suggestion would be that the numbers probably can't go up significantly, but certainly they can come down. The moderator wouldn't allow something to significantly increase, but they can always come down.
Thank you, Madam Chair. As luck would have it, we have the Chair of the Finance Committee here. My memory, if it's, if my memory serves here, the Finance Committee makes a motion with the final numbers at the time of town meeting and that is what's acted upon.
Correct.
Right. So, putting, including these, they're always tweaked at the end anyways. I mean, even if we held them to come back again, they're still going to get tweaked.
To move this along, I'll, I'll rescind my motion.
I'll take the second one.
And I'll move that we include the customary articles one through three.
Yeah, second.
Okay. Moved and seconded. Any further discussion on one through three? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, unanimous.
And then I'll move again that we include the customary articles five through eight, subject to further approval of the final amounts.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Unanimous. Okay, thank you, Ed. Um, what about?
So, Article Four was not acted upon the accepted provisions.
Except the provisions of Mass General Law Chapter 64G.
That at last vote was unanimous?
Yes.
If I can record as I go.
No.
So, go, this is the one to go from the local excise tax that will go, see if the town will vote to amend its acceptance of Mass General Law Chapter 64G, Section 3A by increasing the percentage of local option room occupancy tax on rental of rooms in, in a bed and breakfast establishment, hotel, lodging house, short-term rental or motel from 4% to 6% to take effect on July 1st, 2019 and to act fully thereon by request of the Board of Selectmen.
Okay.
So, I don't mind taking this up, but I'd like to take it up as conversation, so depending on how much conversation we get in, I recommend we pull it. But I am against going up to 2% as of right now, especially without having a public hearing and discussing this based on the amount that we're increasing the taxes to these bed and breakfasts and inns that we can't control, like the 5.7% state and the 2.75 water. So, at this point, I am against raising this 2%.
Okay. Ed, did you have a question?
No, I'm.
Oh, you were going to make a motion.
Yeah, I, um, actually, I have a different opinion than Michael does on this, but do we want to move to hold this to have further discussion?
I think we want to hold it.
Yes.
Yeah.
Doesn't need a vote if we're holding it.
No, we're just going to bring it back.
Okay. So, that's a hold.
Hold, yeah. Michael?
I would also ask that we put this on as a topic of conversation, as regular board agenda, so the public can be involved and so that we can advertise it prior to making this decision.
I'm sure the public hearing is.
Correct. Thank you.
Okay, next.
The next one is wastewater sewer.
Well, isn't, it's water department, isn't it? Water department.
I thought it's motion.
Oh, did that include? I'm sorry, sorry. You missed eight.
I didn't do nine.
I missed eight. I apologize. Okay, so nine, wastewater sewer budget.
Move we include it.
Okay. Moved to one through and seconded. Second? Moved and seconded. Any further discussion? Michael?
The only discussion I have on this is I would like to add the caveat into the motion that if we have the money, we haven't gone through the budget yet. We're assuming that we have $250,000 based on us assuming that we're approving Chris's budget. So, I, I think we have to add final number to be determined to your motion because as of right now, the budget increases and the projects we're looking at, I'm probably a no on that as well.
The thing is, is that we could always move indefinitely postpone, even if it's on.
I mean, it needs to be on, technically.
Chris, I.
If it's onerous and Michael's right, if it turns out that the final figure is something that we can't really do, we could always take, even if it's included, we could accept the fact that it's there and then vote an indefinite postponement is our position.
Dana?
Just wondering if this could be a line item within the budget rather than a separate article.
We actually considered doing that, but the water department is an enterprise fund and last year at town meeting, we voted the sewer enterprise fund to be established, so this would just mirror with the water because we adopted the enterprise fund.
Okay.
I'd be more comfortable with this. My computer just went crazy. I'd be more comfortable if there was a little more explanation in this and what the, what the money's going to be used for, either in the motion itself or in the article. Is this to help people make up the difference in the?
Yeah, I mean, I, I think.
This is part of what you said before, to, to pay the fees to Chatham, for instance, until we get enough users on there.
Correct.
This was used for, but it'd be nice if that were built into this so people understood it.
Yeah, if, I, I, that's a great suggestion in terms of.
Because right now is a.
It's about revising the language.
Yeah.
Once you want an explanation included in, we can, we could do the explanation.
I'd be more comfortable with that.
So, I don't know, we revise that one, so we'll hold that.
Well, no. The motion, the article's the article at this point. You know, if you want to add an explanation to it, that's fine.
I mean, it'd be nice to have, I think, it's right, I mean, just having it there. If you do want to note anything, you want an explanation, then we can draft it up.
All right, so.
Yeah.
We've got the motion with the addition of adding the explanation.
Okay, yeah.
Correct? Are you satisfied with that?
I'm satisfied with that.
Okay, so that's the motion then?
Sure.
You guys good?
That's what I said. That's what he said.
All right, so it's moved and seconded to add it with the explanation. Is there any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
I'm abstaining.
Abstain. Michael abstain.
4-0.
Okay. Adopt the capital plan is the next. Do you want me to read these out if we're not?
No.
On this one, I'd say pull it. Chris, we've had conversation about having an agenda item talking about, I guess we can add.
By charter, we have to have a capital plan, whether you want to have all the topics that are on there or that have the plan amended is something that.
We could have that discussion.
Have that discussion.
So.
But by charter, you can adopt the capital plan.
All right.
But this is so vague, it has absolutely no meaning until we actually flesh out what that capital plan is. It just says adopt the capital.
Do you want to hold it?
Yeah, I see that. No, I think we can proceed with that, right?
Okay, I move we.
Hang on one second, Don. I was asking.[1647.54]
I wouldn't vote to include it until I know what I'm including. There's a whole page that says, insert capital plan.
Dana?
In theory, you have last year's capital plan with the new year seven added, that, that, that you're really, I mean, in theory, that you're accepting the doc.
Last, last week as part of the budget message, if there's any revisions, you know, please let me know, but.
Okay.
And that is strictly items that are over fifty thousand dollars. I know last year when I left, there were grand totals on there, confused people, so I just took the totals off and just.
Okay, so can I get a motion?
Yes, I move we include Article ten, adopt the capital plan.
I'll second that.
Moved and seconded. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Aye.
I said aye. No, I didn't say aye to oppose.
Wait a minute, time out.
Four one.
It's four one. All right, lease purchase agreements.
This was in the, the large change, that they now want us to specifically identify that we will be doing leases above and beyond, so we have like photocopiers, tasers, things of that nature. So this was language recommended by council to comply with the, I want to say it's the Municipal Modernization Act made this change, that you have to clearly identify the, the lease agreements that you're voting on.
This was a specific concern I know from the Golf Committee. It was gonna cost some more money to go with short-term leases than you go with longer-term leases.
Yeah, like you said, the Municipal Modernization Act of two thousand sixteen. So can I get a motion? Do we want to move forward with this?
Yeah, I move we, we include Article eleven, lease purchase agreements.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Capital items funded from free cash, items under fifty thousand, Article twelve.
Again, you know, I, I think, just the, the plan submitted by administration is a balanced budget. If things are gonna be taken out or changed, so long as they're changed, reducing it, that there's probably no issue. So this isn't a final, this is just a work product of presenting the town meeting.
Don?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Call me a purist, but we've been talking about this for a year. If you wanted to call this durable items funded from free cash, capital items has an actual meaning. We have a charter that calls for capital items in a capital plan. These are, for the most part, sub fifty thousand dollars, which by definition in our charter becomes a capital item. So it's a misnomer, I mean, it, it, people, our capital plan has been two-thirds non-capital items now for the last several years. You gotta find a better way of describing this, because this is not our capital items being funded by free cash.
I just, for the average person, through you, Madam Chair, you know, at going to town meeting, town meeting is confusing enough, and really what I was trying to do is, if you see it on the capital plan and the article before, that these are the same items that you see. I don't mind adding a, a better description to this title of saying durable goods, you know, as seen on the capital plan, I, I don't know, but there's nothing on there that's not within the, the capital plan itself, so hence the name capital plan, so people have a place to refer it back to.
And that's, that's precisely what I'm railing against, it shouldn't have been on the capital plan. I mean, it's, it's not capital. We could take it up, I'll, I'll agree to vote for it, but we gotta come to a, a point in time where we are specific about what we're doing. Somewhere in the last five years, we have taken a wrong turn, and we've gotten, and you've heard me say this, we've got a capital plan that mimics Where's Waldo. You can't find the capital items because there's so much other stuff going on, it's hiding in plain sight. They're not capital. Fifty thousand dollars and over is capital, and it's not my opinion, it's in the charter. Calling it anything other than that is confusing in and of itself.
Any other board members have a?
I, I have a slightly different opinion. I agree with the terminology, but there is some benefit to including all the, our expenses in the capital plan. That can be listed as a separate category, I'm okay with that, but to have it on one spreadsheet where we can look at it and not, and not hunt around for it, is beneficial to me. If we put this in and, and we can change the term, I'm okay with that, but I still don't want to, to be consistent, that's my big complaint with the school budget last week, was they had five hundred thousand dollars, it's in the school budget, they, it's pulled out and put in our budget, so it's like a hide the ball or something, figure out what the total expenditures are. I don't mind, Don, but you know, to put it, to, to name it differently, but I like it all together, so we can find it.
Michael?
I have a different opinion than both of you.
Good.
I think, I'd like to see us get to the point where we're putting some of this stuff back in the budgets that I believe they belong in, but I would move that we approve Article twelve, capital items funded from free cash, items under fifty thousand in the warrant.
I'll second it.
Moved and seconded. Any further discussion? Don?
Can I ask a substantive question here? I thought we were going out to secure a grant for the Harwich Center ADA sidewalk, and it's listed here as a cost to us, as a specific line item.
This is matching money? The towns match?
Michael?
Just one comment on it, and to Don, to Don's point on that, I hope we're gonna have an opportunity to vote on these individually, and that this isn't the number that's gonna be in the warrant, because there's several things I'd like to talk about, but as explained, we're only voting to put it in, not in final form, but in the warrant, absolutely.
Okay, so moved and seconded. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed?
Aye.
Edward, you in? Yes?
Yeah.
So four to one.
I just, you know, if you want to change the title, you could say something like, equipment and small public works projects, items under fifty thousand dollars.
I don't even mind the durable goods, I think the durable goods is a good.
Well, they're not, not all of them, it's durable goods.
Okay, did, did you get that language?
No, what was?
Equipment and.
Equipment and small pub, public works.
Equipment and small.
Public works, items under fifty thousand.
Okay, Facility Maintenance and Repair Fund, excuse me. Article thirteen. To see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate transfer from available funds or borrow, a sufficient sum of money as may be required to defray costs related to facility and grounds, maintenance and repair, included in the FY two thousand twenty capital plan, and to act fully thereon by request of the Board of Selectmen.
Madam Chair, I move that we include in the warrant Article thirteen, entitled Facility Maintenance and Repair Fund.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Fund the snow and ice deficit for FY two thousand eighteen.
It should be nineteen.
Nineteen, right? Yeah.
So far, we've been real smart.
Michael?
I approve, we, I, I move we approve Article fourteen, fund snow and ice deficit for FY nineteen.
Second.
Moved and seconded by Ed. Any further discussion? All in favor? Aye. All opposed? Fund shortfalls and budget transfers for FY two thousand eighteen?
It should be nineteen.
Nineteen, right?
The warrant was right, the agenda posting was on.
Right. Sorry, Ed, go ahead.
I move inclusion.
Okay.
Of?
Article fifteen.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any further discussion? All in favor? Aye. All opposed? Purchase slash replace mini excavator for Water Department.
Is there any intent for them to come before us, Chris, or are we just doing this in budget tra, budget meeting in March? Obviously, March second will be the first opportunity, and then subsequent opportunities, whatever, whoever you want to bring in and have additional discussions. Obviously, every, every item on here that was capital was vetted by the, the Capital Outlay Committee, so they, they had discussions.
Okay, so.
I mean, these are, these are a little different, these are single items that we're voting on, so we're basically, if we're putting in the warrant, although I guess we could vote indefinitely postpone, as Don mentioned.
Right.
Yeah, move that we approve Article sixteen be included in the warrant.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any further discussion? All in favor? Aye. All opposed? Replacement of section of water main entering tank.
Move we include Article seventeen.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any further discussion? All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
This is a.
It's a slow vote.
Madam Chair, do we just want to approve the Water Department motions at this time, since they're funded by?
That'd be excellent.
Just do them as approved.
Water, do them as the mass, and then we can question later. Well, we've already approved sixteen and seventeen, right?
They're included.
No.
So I, included.
Just included in the warrant.
Yeah, like, can we do?
Included, I got it.
Not approved.
Right, not approved, included.
So replace the T-one main facility.
But we'll, I move we include Article eighteen, replace the T-one main facility generator. Article nineteen, purchase of twenty nineteen Ford F-five fifty truck for Water Department.
Second.
Moved and.
And that's it.
Yeah, that's it. Move and seconded. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? So that gets us to.
Twenty.
Phase two wastewater utilities, and it's Article twenty.
I do have one, if I may, one question on this. Chris, is there money associated with this, this article?
Not contemplating it this time. What we're, what we're doing in this, and I will hopefully have shortly from legal counsel, is the Board of Selectmen can do sewer easements as the sewer authority in the community, so you'll have that, if there's any taking element to it, that would be funded out of the sewer fund, if you would, or out of the, the, the phase two sewer project. This is actually, if we're gonna have a utility easement, to try to expand and have a utility easement over these same properties. Right now, what we found is that water has water easements over these private ways, but does not have sewer. So now we would go in and do a sewer, as the Board of Selectmen acting as sewer commissioners, this is to try to create a utility easement. So really, the only other additional utility that the town would be engaged in would be drainage, so I would think that the cost would be fairly minimal from discussions with Chatham as they do this. There's usually, because you're taking it, there's usually a potential, but most people do not put in.
Do you need to include some dollars in our budget for this possibility?
Ed?
Probably not until we're looking at specific easements we want to acquire.
So it'll come back to us later as a budget item, is that what we have?
Well, this would be kind of my suggestion, would be to, to leave it at zero, to try to encourage people that we don't want people to pursue individual, going after us, and then if people do on an individual basis, then we would obviously have to settle those up. And I would hope that people, if it's a private, private way, and we're already coming on to do water, we're already coming on to do sewer, that they would be okay with us coming on to take any drainage type of issue.
I agree with that, I just want to be sure we're covered.
Yeah.
Don, did you have a question?
Well, yeah, as to the sewer easements, I mean, let's be clear here, we've already adopted Chatham sewer regulations that require people to hook up, so it'd be kind of ironic if we don't accept the easements, the, after we've already told them, you will be punished if you don't hook up.
No, this is a different issue.
This actually expands, though, just.
It's, it's that plus.
Right now, we have the ability for the Water Department to go on to all these private ways and go on there for water utility. At the time, the water utility easements were taken, it did not, it did not expand to sewer.
Right.
So you will be asked, the Sewer Commission, but drainage, we couldn't include that as part of the sewer vote, this just covers the other potential utilities.
Okay. I move we include Article twenty, phase two wastewater utility easements.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any further discussions? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Purchase and, purchase and equipment vehicles for the DPW, actually, do, any interest in doing all the DPWs together, or do you want to go one by one?
One by one.
Okay. So Article twenty-one, to see if the town will vote to raise an appropriate transfer from available funds or borrow, sufficient sum of money to purchase and equip the following vehicles, one ton dump truck, or are you gonna make a motion?
I move that we approve Article twenty-one, purchase and equip vehicles for the DPW.
Second.
Moved and seconded by Don. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Okay, reconstruction of Lower County Road.
Chair, I move that we include Article twenty-two, reconstruction of Lower County Road.
Okay. Any second?
I have some difficulty, so I'd like some more, I'd like to pull this or hold it.
You want to hold it? Uh, Don?
Yeah, thank you, Madam Chair. I mean, I've been musing over this for quite some time. I don't doubt that we're, we're gonna have to repave the road at some point, given the fact that it's a debt exclusion, and it would have not just town meeting as an action, but also voters at, at town election, to assure them that they know, that they're entering into this knowingly, that we've got bills that have not been borrowed for yet, for the tax bills. I'd feel comfortable having it here, but I gotta say that when it comes time for a position, I don't feel comfortable supporting it. I think it's something that I would like to have the taxpayers have the ability to look at, so I'd, I'd feel okay with it being on the warrant eventually, but we're, we're digging ourselves a really big debt hole, that I want to make absolutely certain that we understand better, as, as we go forward.
Michael?
I'm not even comfortable having it on the warrant. I, I think last year, we were very specific with people and said that we were gonna take it easy on them this year, and that we were, we were asking them, a, a very big ask last year for thirty million dollars, and I think going back to them this year, it's not four point five six oh million, there's a million added to that, that they're going to take money from the existing roadways fund and the match, so it is before bid, a five point five six zero million dollar project that we're gonna go before them. Other things are gonna be put on hold. I think that the, that my understanding is the street, Smart Streets or street, whatever program through MOP has changed, and they no longer require you to have a full bike lane and sidewalks, so I think we should revisit this and look for other money for this project, or at least investigate what I was able to find today in a short time.
Link?
But I'm against it.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Complete Streets Program is different than when we go and get on the NPO to fix a road. That is entirely, Leo talked to me out in the parking lot on the way in about it, two different animals. This has been discussed, I believe, four or five years ago, that I brought this to the Board of Selectmen. We brought it because it's two point two five miles worth of road, it's a big project, it's got a continuous sidewalk. Last year, the water did a million two worth of work down there. The road is in dire straits. It is, this was the next road on the tip program that I had programmed in prior to the one twenty-four project, blowing up and going south on me. The one twenty-four project, we didn't need any private property to meet the design exceptions that Mass DOT had given us. That was a four million dollar project that the town walked away from. We were planning on doing Lower County Road, but if we couldn't meet the standards of that program, where we didn't need private property, we have a forty-foot right of way on Lower County Road. It would include private property taking. The Complete Streets Program that Selectmen Caskell is talking about is a new program they, they brought up, where there is some limited funds that's available, and it essentially says that every time you're gonna go and do a road, do any maintenance, that you have to explain, you either have to build accommodations, I mean, putting sidewalks and some bike lanes, or explain why you have not. We've looked at this, we've talked about this at the Transportation Improvement with the Cape Cod Commission on the program. I, I have not brought this forward and recommended it to the Board, because I quite frankly didn't think that it really meant the culture here. Lower County Road is in dire need. It was, I, I brought it forward last year, there was so much on the warrant with the wastewater and the fire station, everything else, so it slid to this year. The number that Mr. Akableum came up with, you were five point six, I think is awfully inflated. I've explained in writing to the Board that that is derived from the mass state weighted average, put impending on the back of a napkin, I come up with probably, and I'm guessing about a million dollars less in total. The project went out a week or two ago to the street, we've had twelve bidders take out packets so far. My best guess is that the actual construction's gonna come in more, about four million dollars. Given the Board's prior concern about the price tag on it, I had discussions with Chris Clark about somehow leveraging some Chapter ninety money, and maybe some article money, some other road money. I've put everything we're doing on absolute hold right now, planning wise, because this road, I feel, is number one project for the town.
Thank you, Link.
I really hope you put it in front of the voters.
Thank you. How does the, how's their, the culvert, does that impact, the culvert that has to be addressed as well, impact his budget?
Yeah, Madam Chair, the culvert, I was just notified today on Lower, ah, strike that, I'm sorry, on Great Western Road. We knew it was a problem, I had it on our plan for next year, Great Western Road was on our paving plan, and we were planning on taking care of the culvert at that point. Unfortunately, it's percolated right to the top, so it's gonna require some emergency action. Unfortunately, it's percolated right to the top, so it's going to require some emergency action.
Ed?
So your estimate, your estimate is a bid will come in at somewhere close to $4 million?
I am hoping. Obviously, I'm not putting that in writing.
No, I know, I know.
Um, yes. I, I, the, the book job that Mr. Akableum developed is how he's always done it for 30 years at MassDOT. I found those prices that they were utilizing to be higher. Some were significantly higher, some were marginally higher than what our county bid projects are. I think we're in a pretty competitive environment, and I would like to think that it's probably closer to $4 million plus police details, which I'm going to guess is probably, he has like $450 in there for police details. I think that number's probably going to be around three. And he had a 10% contingency in there, which, by the way, MassDOT does not allow us a contingency on our Chapter 90 projects.
So you're for, say, $4,300,000, and then you're anticipating diverting some of the Chapter 90 and other road money? How much of that would you potentially be able to divert?
I put in writing to Mr. Clark that we could probably come up with $1 million out of existing Chapter 90 and existing road article, that we could probably soften the blow to the taxpayers by about $1 million.
So that would drop the project that would go to the voters for approval to 3.3?
In that neighborhood.
One of the things that, I guess, a couple of comments. You know, one of the things that we're trying to do in the design here is we still have other projects that we need to do in between the large elements of the sewer project. So we have a two- or three-year time window to hopefully do some of these smaller projects. All these projects that I've referenced are in the, the capital plan, are in the, the finance plan that was included in the budget message to show people what the tax impact would be. I think that if this was to be delayed, we run the risk of having it bump up against DHY and having, you know, a request for 13, 14, 15 million plus this on it. So the idea was to try to get this in as a lighter year, if you would, for debt exclusions, and try to get this project done. I, I kind of fear that, you know, if we wait, the price tag is, is just going to go higher. The road has already been cut up. The road's already been temporarily repaired because of the water work. And, you know, this is one where, because we've already done work on the road, we've almost guaranteed that it's going to need work, because that was the whole idea behind doing the, the utility work to get out of the way, so we could then redo the whole road. If this isn't voted, then we most likely would have to consider the TIP funding. And, you know, I was here for a section of the 124, and it would take a significant amount of prolonged political courage to go and take a lot of land from people's front yard to do the project through TIP. That's the reason why we haven't gone the TIP route.
Michael?
Chris, I certainly appreciate you trying to slide small projects, $4 million projects, in amongst the wastewater projects. But let's be clear that the voters haven't recognized the last year's $30 million in borrowing yet. And, and the other piece of this is, Link, why can't we do half the road and then the other half of the road? Why do we need to spend all of this at once? And I drove the road a few weeks ago, and we had the torrential downpours and saw where the major puddles were. So that's one point, and I guess I'll let you answer that, and then I have a question for Chris.
Link?
I have, ever since I've been a DPW director now, resisted fragmenting projects for a number of reasons. But the layperson would drive down the road, say, "This is nice and new," and then get to something that, that isn't. This project includes both of the ends, the end there Dennis and the end near Route 28 is complete reconstruction. The middle section is in pretty decent shape and would only be putting drainage in, a mill and an overlay, and repairing the continuous sidewalk. There's not a lick of that sidewalk that is ADA compliant. They all have those returns on there. It, it, it really needs some help. Short answer is, yes, it's doable. I wouldn't recommend it. You always pay more in the long run than doing it all up at once.
Chris, at a meeting about four weeks ago,
Thank you, Link.
David Young stood before us and said that there was a good chance we could come down Lower County Road with the sewer pipe if we did the DHY connection. And we're about to pave Route 28, which will make that unaccessible for that pipe, if we make an agreement with DHY.
Yeah, one of the things, that's a great point, and we, one of the items we want to have a discussion about is resequencing the overall sewer project. And resequencing the sewer project, so we prevent doing that, digging up a road that we just repaired. I believe that the, and I know Larry and Don were both in that same discussion with me. I believe that we move that out to Phase Four or Phase Five, which would be about 15 years out. So the, the project that we do have TIP funding for and is programmed for TIP is in 2023 to do Route.
28.
Route 28, thank you. I don't know. I have a different root number in my head. Route 28, thank you, from Herring River to Division Street. That, we will have to try as part of that TIP project to put the sewer line in that. So we have changed the phasing to allow that to plug in, and the immediate businesses in that area to plug in. So Lower County, the idea is that if we do Lower County in the current cycle, by waiting 15 years before that Phase Five hits, yeah, 10 or 15 years, that we'll get the five-year life out of the, the road.
So on the, on the borrowing, just my last point, we haven't borrowed the $30 million from last year. This is going to hit at the same time that that's going to hit. And we haven't gotten our, our deadline or our timeline from CDM Smith yet on what the sequencing changes are going to be, on whether or not we're going to be borrowing more upfront or borrowing more later. So we really have no idea what we're going to borrow in the next five to seven years on wastewater, because David Young has not gotten back to us on what the sequencing difference is going to be. So we're going to be adding, potentially adding more borrowing. And your capital plan shows the borrowing dropping off years from now. And I wonder why we're not considering doing repairs with the $1 million that he has already now and borrowing for such a large project when more borrowing drops off.
Well, I, I do think, we have a road maintenance program, which is obviously coming up, that allows for Lincoln to be able to do work in various roads. So what we're talking about having to do is, we, we can't have Great Western Road fail. I mean, that's just not something we could do. So we will divert and not do some of those other roadway projects we were anticipating doing. And I think Great, Great Western was on the plan to do. We're just moving it and focusing on drainage issues regarding that. So I wouldn't necessarily, it's not money that's available. It's money that we put towards roads, that roads will have to be delayed as emergencies come up to address.
And also, though, going back to the wastewater monies and, and some of the benefits of getting the 0% funding, right? When we have David Young come back to talk about different pieces of that types of funding that we're looking at, and looking at what's coming on to the tax roll and what's coming off, in terms of, it might be helpful for us to see, have a visual where we can see what's coming on next year and what's going off. I think you did already give us a visual in the, right, in the butt.
It is in the budget message. We could probably break it down a little bit more.
Right, but that's what I'm saying, because I do remember having that in the packet. But I think it's helpful when we're trying to analyze.
And Carol did, a, a individual one. The, the print was pretty small, but the material is, is there. That shows the dollar impact of each of these projects.
Right. I think it would be helpful. Don?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'm kind of torn between what Michael said and what the administrator said, because the, the reality is here, I mean, not to hold this particular road hostage. Route 28 is absolutely a wild card, because there's been nothing that's in our packets that presupposes the discussion we're having now, that when the state comes in, there's going to be a five-year moratorium, and 70% of the DHY costs are going to be on the town side, not on the wastewater plant. And that we will probably have to drop dry pipe in, in, in the extreme. The, even though we don't intend to hook it up to anything, just to meet that moratorium time limit, which would mean that we're accelerating some of the borrowings that we had anticipated being further out on the plan. We don't know any of this stuff. Nothing that's been presented actually contemplates that.
Well, I, I think to have a, a more intelligent discussion, we need to have all the plans to kind of show what that is. In terms of the overall costs, the sequencing, I think Phase Four was the plant, our own plant coming online, which was the largest spike of all the spikes in the total project. That spike has been eliminated if we go with DHY. And that has been, that peak has been shaved off if we go with DHY.
But again, we don't know that, because this, this is, it's not just the volume of the money. It is when the money is going to be expended, and that's changing. I don't know that it's an even trade either. None, none of us do.
I think that that's why we need to have that more consolidated discussion.
Let's hold this and bring it back.
Let's hold it, which, which is what we originally said.
I do think, Chris, correct me if I'm wrong, but I think that during, and Don was there too. I think during our last meeting, Dave Young gave some of those numbers to Carol to work out what the finance was, so. And we can move that, I don't know where she is, and gain that to us, but we can move that up.
The numbers in the, in the budget message included the changes to the sequencing.
The latest, that, okay. I didn't catch that.
It's in the, it's in the budget message.
It's in the budget message. We had received from CDM the, the new funding chart.
The changes in the phasing, yeah.
Yeah.
The budget message, as was pointed out, we didn't show the full 40 years. We have the 40 years. We showed the element of just the seven or whatever we, we put in there. We put in there a limited time.
Well, Madam Chair, I suggest we review that again and bring it back as another discussion.
So we're going to hold that one. Link?
One last point, Madam Chair. We have a bid opening date of April 19th. So we'll know, have some hard costs for the Board, April 19th.
Okay, great. Thank you very much, Link. Thanks for your hard work on this. So we'll hold that. Purchase of a mobile lift system, Article 23. Do we get a motion or discussion?
Move that we include Article 23 in the warrant.
Second.
Moved and seconded by Larry.
How's that funded?
This is free cash.
Any further discussion? All in favor? Aye. All opposed?
Aye.
Road maintenance program. 4-1. Article 24.
What do you mean? This is the traditional one that we have done, the $700,000 per year? And this one, we have this paid off over five years, so we rotate it through. So each year, we pay about 300 to 350, I think, to pay that off. So materially, it's basically the same money. As a year falls off, we add a year in.
Okay.
The one thing we did make a change in this one was we included in there, just so, for transparency, transparency purposes, that Lower County Road could be funded out of that, too, so we give ourselves that flexibility.
Chair, I move we include Article 24, the road maintenance program.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed?
The second on that was Larry?
Larry.
Michael.
Oh, sorry, Michael. Larry made the motion. Michael seconded. Zoning Planning Board.
Michael did it.
Sounds like it's his fault.
Single-family dwelling with accessory apartment, Article 25.
The next four are all Planning Board ones that the Board referred to Planning Board. So I don't know if you want to vote that as a group. Starts with 25.
Yeah.
Yeah, the single-family dwelling, freestanding.
25 through 28.
Yeah.
I move that we approve Articles 25 through 28, zoning articles.
Okay, so 25 through 28.
Second.
And that's the motion is to include.
Include.
So it's been moved and seconded. Any further discussion? All in favor? Aye. All opposed? Okay. So that gets us through to, uh, Provide funding for an update on the town's local comprehensive plan. Which is 29, yeah.
I move we include Article 29, provide funding for an update on the town's local comprehensive plan in the warrant.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any further discussion?
No.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Article 30, under the library, fund technology hardware and software for Brooks Free Library.
I move we include Article 31, fund the library technology.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any further discussion? All in favor? Aye. All opposed? Article 31, under golf, landscape reclamation, major tree removal.
You may want to do the landscape reclamation and bunker renovation. Coming out of golf proceeds and both for improvements to the golf.
Okay. So we do, can I get a motion?
I move we include Articles, Article 31, landscape reclamation at Cranberry Valley Golf Course. Article 32, bunker renovation at Cranberry Valley Golf Course.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any further discussion? All in favor? Aye. All opposed? Want to do the cemetery?
Yeah, I move we, we include Article 33, amendments to cemetery rules and regulations.
I'll second for discussion, Dana.
Good. And 34, cemetery.
We're going to do that first.
No, we're going to do this.
01, 33, okay.
Uh, he moved it. I seconded it, and now we're discussing. I said Dana was hovering, so.
I didn't see Dana hovering.
Um, I think this proposes to do two things this year. One is the, take one address off. But the other portion was the same thing that both Boards rejected last year. I didn't know if there was a way to fix that or to reject it again this year.
What are you talking about?
Say what?
Well, I'll take a stab at the library.
Two things to change. One is my address, and the other one is to remove the Howard Center Cemetery from the rules and regulations, because we don't own that. They also added a rule that things that are left on cemetery lots, and this is mostly to address Christmas decorations that go up on Thanksgiving, and people don't remove them sometimes until April. So what happens is they'll blow around the cemetery, so we wanted a date on that. And the other thing was, after funerals, when people leave large amounts of flowers over the graves in the summertime, after about three or four days, they're completely dead. But after a week, they are pretty unsightly. So those were the recommendations by the Cemetery Commission.
Thank you.
So I, I think maybe just for a little bit more clarity, that there's three things being sought here. One is just simply a change of the address of the location. That, that's something that has been effectuated already for a couple of years now. Second is the, the litigation regarding the cemetery downtown here, change the ownership of that. So those two, I, I think are new material. And then the third is something that was brought up last year and is being sought again this year. I would always, hearing FinCom, if we had the full element in there, the motion can always go less. It just can't be expanded, so.
Just to make it clear, that's my own opinion. Finance Committee hasn't talked about these at all. I was just looking at that. And that's something that we did vote last year not to include that portion. So I don't know what the discussion will be this year. That's just my own opinion on that.
It was I.
But you're right. We can, we can, we could have that as a motion, too, to take that part out, but.
We could restrict it, yeah.
Okay, maybe ask Robin a question?
Yeah.
Robin, this isn't, last year wasn't the first time this has been removed either, has it? This has been, the, the part of it that's controversial, the address change, to me, is no barrier, but.
Right. So all of those things were on it last year, but the Finance Committee voted to indefinitely postpone it, so it was not voted on at town meeting. So the same thing, it's the exact same thing that was on last year. It's coming back again this year. It's exactly the same as last year.
Okay. Don?
We need to change the address, and we need to, so if, even if you guys want to strike out the other recommendations that the Commission makes, that's fine. Those other two things have to come off, the change.
I'm just making one notation here.
Okay.
I'll start by prefacing this by saying, I'm not one of those people that's bashful by saying Merry Christmas. And other people who I know who are Jewish will say Happy Hanukkah to me, because we all respect each other. Having said that, your regulations don't call for holiday decorations to be removed by January 31st. They only call for Christmas decorations to be removed.
That being said, the Cemetery Commissioners voted on those, and I'm their administrator, and that's what they recommended.
You're riding yourself into a trap.
Okay.
Is there, is there a problem with changing this so that there's two articles? Or are we just changing it at town meeting before and when we vote?
Can somebody make the amendment on the floor, like in these other articles, to change it to say holiday decorations?
Yeah, they can do that. They can make that motion.
I'm not trying to torture anything here. This could be done by motion, so it's not that tricky a thought. I just wanted to bring up that it's unenforceable unless it's a Christmas decoration.
Correct.
I would put it in its entirety and then, with the understanding that it may be scoped down, the rest are issues.
Okay. All right.
I was just encouraging Michael to press his point, because if it's two articles, and that allows us to go to town meeting, vote for the address change, and then we can include the second part of this, and it doesn't affect what has to be done.
How would we do that after the fact?
We can do it now. We're including the article, right?
But it's two.
These are departmental articles, so.
There's no placeholder for it.
You guys are determining the warrant, so if you tell me to split it into two articles.
We can do it, right?
Split it into two articles.
I'm fine with that.
That would be my recommendation, because I'm going to vote.
That would be contrary to the vote that you have from Cemetery.
How do you do that?
You can't. I mean, you know, it's deadlines for submitting the articles, that.
Okay, so leave it. Leave them as two separate.
That would probably be the case.
Okay, let's leave them as two separate.
And the final form.
So, you have.
Of those articles passed.
Okay, so do I?
Have a motion and a second?
All right, so any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? No? Unanimous? Solar photovoltaic energy.
Actually, this is cemetery.
Oh, I'm sorry. Sorry about that. Cemetery Arboretum Project Mapping and Software. I skipped right over the, that one.
This is being funded out of Cemetery Funds.
Right.
What Article is that?
Act thirty-four.
Move that we approve Article thirty-four, Cemetery.
Or thirty-five, I'm sorry.
No, it's thirty-four.
I move that we approve Article thirty-four, Cemetery Arboretum Project Mapping and Software.
Move?
Second.
And seconded. Larry seconded that. Any further discussion? All in favor? Aye. All opposed? Now, solar photovoltaic. I said photovoltaic. Photovoltaic energy systems.
I do have one question on this. I gather that the statement you, basically, you will include specific properties in this motion before, so.
We will include the specific properties in the, in the short part of this. We need to have solar photogenic. Energy systems, anything that is ground-mounted, we need to have specifically identified, and anything that's gonna have a lease over a certain period of time. The only thing that my understanding we could do, kind of as-of-right, is any structures onsite, on the top of a building. So, the cart barn, for instance, wouldn't require any town meeting action. But expanding and doing the, the project at the, as-of-right project next to the landfill. Because we want to do a lease, we need to have that extended under this.
And that's part of this, do you know what we talked about before?
Yes.
Okay. Did we have a motion? We didn't make a motion.
There was no motion on that.
I still got questions.
Oh, sorry.
I mean, do we have a?
I have questions.
Do we have, do we have a list?
You wanna hold it?
Yeah, I'd like to see, you know.
We have the list.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Okay, let's hold it.
I don't need the meets and bounds, but, you know, just the general location.
We have it.
Okay.
And the whole number thirty-six as well.
Can we say one more thing about thirty-five?
Yeah.
I have a more profound problem than everybody else does, so just letting everybody know upfront when it comes back. The state statutes talk about a lease as being enjoyment of property by the person who leases it from the town. So, therefore, it does require a town meeting action. We have spent years trying to skirt around what we're actually getting for what we're giving by giving this nebulous language about entering into long-term licenses agreements and other contractual agreements on behalf of the town, subject to such terms and conditions as the Board of Selectmen shall deem to be in the best interest of the town, rather than presenting them with an actual request to lease that shows a price for what we're getting. And it presupposes, trust us. That has never worked out well. I don't like this format. I've never liked this format. You come back with what you're actually trying to lease for what you're gonna get for it, and then put it in front of town meetings so that they know what the, what the trade is. To say this means that at that point in time, the Selectmen have picked up the authority to do anything and everything that they want to do, because the town meeting front-loaded it for them. They gave them the authority. And I made this comment last year at the fire department. Contracts and leases, the way this, the genesis of this under state law was the reason it has to go in front of town meeting is because it's surrendering as if it were a sale. The use of a property for a period of time, and towns, the townspeople have in the past been told one thing, and another thing has happened.
Okay, that one's coming back.
We're holding that anyway.
We will have a list of the properties, whether the negotiations in the RFP will be completed in time for town meeting or not, it's. Okay, Article thirty-six, Chair.
I didn't, Ed, did you have?
Yeah, well, you know, the issue, well, we'll discuss it later.
All right, so we'll bring, we're bringing it back anyway. Okay.
We were waiting on Article thirty-six, Terry Russell, to get back to us with some language changes, and whether or not Chatham's voting it. Last year, they didn't put it on their warrant, so there was no need for us to put it on our warrant.
Right. Yeah, we don't have that clarification, so we'll hold this. Everyone okay with holding that, thirty-six?
Well, you know, we don't have the language, so as far as I'm concerned, we can't put it on the warrant, so.
Won't they have the lang, then they'll have the language.
We did receive draft language to the point, and I don't know if Chatham voted it or not. I thought it was being presented. We didn't have the complete language either. So, Terry was going back. He didn't have the answer to a question with some language that was added, done, pointed out. And we want to know if Chatham votes it. More information is necessary.
Yeah, so we're gonna hold it. Thirty-seven, charter amendment, change from water commission to water wastewater commission. Michael?
Move that we approve Article thirty-seven be included in the warrant, amend the Town of Howard's Charter to Water Commission to Water Wastewater Commission.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any further discussion? All in favor? Aye. All opposed? All right, next one, proposed amendments to Howard's Home Road Charter, capital outlay plan, which is Article thirty-eight.
Is there any language on this?
Yeah, just, we, we just received kind of a memo. I don't know if Dawn may have more information, but we didn't get any formal language. So, we, we received a memo saying that they wanted to do these two elements.
They're meeting on it tonight, and John Giorgio is gonna call me to discuss some misgivings he has, so there's really not a point in doing this tonight.
So, hold it.
Yeah.
Yeah, we'll hold it.
Yeah.
Well, you know.
With no language.
With no language, I mean, we're well past the deadline for us to having been turned in. And I don't see how we can include it.
So, we're gonna hold thirty-eight, thirty-nine.
Regardless of what.
It was, well, some material was submitted. It was submitted in the form that.
Final form? That's what the charter says. All articles submitted in final form.
The ex officia one was, was done in final form.
So, we'll hold in both?
Well.
Well, let's hold them and bring them back.
We'll hold them.
And then we'll likely have to pull them according to what Ed says, but, well.
Let's go back over this, because John Giorgio did not say what Ed said.
Yeah, I know. And I disagree with John, and John's, John's opinion is his opinion. It's not a court ruling.
That's good.
It's not the final word.
When it comes back, we'll talk about it. Have the Charter Committee in front of us at that point.
So, ultimately, we'll hold those and bring them back and find out what we're gonna do officially with them.
It's hard to move on.
Appropriate what? Sums of money? Oh, sorry.
I move that we approve Article forty be included in the warrant, appropriate sums of money.
Second.
Moved and seconded.
Do you want to do all the CPC projects as one?
Yeah, that's a good idea.
Suggestions for that?
I'm all right with that. Are you all right with that?
Going from forty to.
Let's just vote on that, since we have a motion.
Just to point out, because this, it is our warrant, except for it ain't our warrant. Community preservation articles, we don't have the authority to hold them. So, we're, whether we take a position against or for, that's another story, but we are obligated, as they submit them.
Right.
Right.
To keep them on, because that's the one exception the legislature gave.
Right.
We don't have to hold, but just say.
So, we'll just say all of them.
Okay.
All right, so which brings us through forty-one?
That's through forty-seven.
Forty-seven, is it? All right, so forty-one through forty-seven. Can you change your motion to that?
Yep. I move we approve to add to the warrant, because we have to, forty-one through forty-seven.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Great.
I think actually that Red River Beach, is that forty-eight?
That's forty-seven.
Forty-seven.
That's forty-seven. Forty-eight is complete construction of the Pet Burial Grounds.
Nope.
Nope.
Isn't it?
Unless we're putting it in Chase Library.
I'm looking at the list versus my computer.
That gets us in the forty-eight stars private petitions.
Oh, sorry.
I made the motion.
Oh, that's right, yeah.
Move that we include Article forty-eight to free the expenses of the Chase and Howard's Court Libraries.
Second.
Point of information, does this come in as a petition article?
It's a petition. We didn't do any of the petition.
We don't get to pull petition articles.
That's not in here, right. So, yes, so forty-eight is the next one.
If you go to Pet Burial Ground is the next one. That's not a petition article.
Yeah.
Okay.
But that's still not, wait a minute.
That's different than, uh.
I'm confused.
I just wanted to make a motion to support.
I'm for it, Michael.
Wait a minute, though. This is confusing, because.
Which is the next one?
Forty, forty-eight. Which one is it, sixty?
That's what I thought the whole.
Actually, fifty-nine, oh, and page forty-three is, oh, no, stand corrected.
Sixty.
Sixty on page forty-three, complete the construction of the Pet Burial.
Wish Dana had said that.
All right, go ahead, Michael.
I move that we approve, to be put on the warrant, Article sixty, complete the construction of the Pet Burial Grounds.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. All opposed?
Aye.
Okay, so four to one.
Just on that, Madam Chair, if the board's okay with this, we do have some of this Pet Burial Ground stuff in different sections, and I'd like to create a grouping that just says Pet Burial Ground, so the revolving account, finishing the project. So, it was a request from some folks to kind of group them all together. If the board's okay with that, so we'll have some, that would be the revolving account, kind of group them, so there could be, to some degree, it makes sense to flow it, because if, if certain things happen, then other things may not have to happen, so.
Keep them all consolidated.
Keep them all consolidated. I tried to do that, but not as nicely as I would have liked, and I think that we can do a little better.
Okay. Yeah, I, I don't have a problem. Does anyone have a problem with that?
I was just wondering on that topic, whether even if the change was made on Article fifty-nine, if you'd still want some money in there under your control to do something with, either move the gazebo or fix this or do that or whatever. So, there, there might be a need to pass that article even if the other article passes. I mean, I don't see them as being, one cancels out the other like they think, but I, I was just wondering that myself, that you might want to take some action. There was also discussion about whether money would be put back into a certain account or whatever. I think that's all done, but there, there might be a need to pass both of those.
Michael?
Chris has a thought. I'll go after Chris. Yeah, I, I think the intent behind this is the work that was done, we did take it from, at the closeout at the end of the year, so we, we refunded it based upon town funds going towards it.
Yeah, I asked if we did that.
Yep. And in this case, I think creating the revolving account that allows for the, the sale of the Pet Burial lots to then be used as a funding source makes sense to kind of have that be one of the earlier articles. I, I think to the point, which is not a bad point, if, if there is, if the revolving account doesn't get created, would the board want to have fund a portion of it just to kind of stabilize the site? We could probably certainly consider doing something like that, but I think that you really need to do the pet, the revolving account first to see if we're gonna have a funding source to cover the work that's anticipated in a few articles after.
Okay. Michael?
As far as sequence goes, Chris, we're voting Article numbers. We really can't change the sequence at this point.
Well, you're voting to include it in the warrant.
But we're also making the motion to include Article fifty-nine with the number into.
Actually, on the.
You change that?
That's why they're not numbered.
We intentionally didn't put numbers on them.
The motions all said the article numbers.
Every motion I've made, me, has a number. So, I don't see how we're gonna change the sequence, number one. And number two, petition articles are before these articles. And regardless, I think, of what we heard tonight, regardless of what happens with the petition article, we could still go forward with all these other articles. It may turn into a debate after the fact, because if town meeting approves the petition article to recommend, I guess, to transfer the land back to the Board of Selectmen, because that's what it would be at this point, it doesn't matter until the Cemetery Commission takes a vote. And the revolving fund, if they vote that revolving fund, then the revolving fund would be set up. Obviously, I don't think we could authorize the use of any money, I guess, until this fought its way out. But why would we need to change the sequence, I guess?
Well, I, I think to that point, Article, and I did try to group them as much as I could to try to make it flow. Article sixty talks about raising and appropriate the seventy thousand to finish the project. And then we had a couple others that were land matters, and then we get into the revolving account for the Pet Burial Grounds.
Oh, so you've already changed it in here.
We did sequence it.
Yeah, resend Article fifty-seven, okay.
But I, in, in hindsight, I think I would rather see doing Article sixty-three, the revolving account for the Pet Burial go before sixty.
Right.
That would be the funding source for sixty.
So, can we renumber Article sixty that we just made a motion on and a vote on right now?
Yeah, why don't we just do that?
Can I just say something? Because, I mean, we, we don't agree on the outcome, but let's, let's talk about the form and the process here. We're gonna bring back a bunch of these others anyway. Instead of us sitting here fumbling with, okay, the article that was previously listed in our agenda packet is sixty-three, will be now sixty. Why don't we just bring them back with the new sequence and just vote them all in with the numbers that we're gonna use, instead of.
Modify the vote with a motion to change the numbers?
Yeah, to correspond with the warrant. Yeah, I think that.
Because it's not gonna take anything off. It's only gonna clarify the motions.
Oh, I'm sorry.
That was gonna be my suggestion.
Yeah, I mean, we can just clarify them.
Because if you take out any of your old ones.
Right.
That renumbers them anyways.
Okay. Yeah, I, I, exactly, so.
And we are gonna bring others back.
Right, so I don't think we have to worry about that for tonight. Okay, Michael?
I move that we approve Article sixty-one, improve the easement for Verizon and EverSource Energy at fourteen sixty-four Orleans Howard's Road, Route thirty-nine, at Fire Station Two.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any further discussion? All in favor? Aye. All opposed?
I'd like to bring back sixty-two unless anyone disagrees, but we have had no conversation about any of these parcels. One of the parcels, some paperwork was dropped to the chair, showing that another commission has care and custody of it, and I think this is a much longer conversation.
I just passed that on, because I wasn't here last.
I have, we have had no discussion where these are, what they are, how we got them, anything.
No, so we, we'll hold that one and bring that back, but we, in the meantime, need to get a listing of the parcels. Okay, so we'll hold that. Establishing.
The parcels are in the warrant.
No, yeah, but I mean, in terms of.
Legal review is not fully complete.
Right, sorry, that's what I meant to say.
And Chris, you haven't, you may not have seen that. I know it was given to the chair, and she was out, but you did see the one on Earl Road, and there were some people that came earlier tonight because of that, but that one looks like it was transferred in nineteen sixty-six to the Recreation Youth Commission. So, that would obviously be taken off.
Send that to the attorney.
The material that we did find on it actually was general municipal. It was not specific to recreation. Okay. We'll, we'll look at that material. I just.
I apologize for passing that on later.
And I guess I would like to have an agenda item on this, so that, Chris, you can, you can tell us why you've picked these pieces of property and go through the whole thing before we. I don't want to include them in the warrant and strike them later.
The committee has myself and Dawn on it, so.
But we haven't actually had this discussion with Wreck and Youth yet either, so it's premature, to Michael's point.
It is on our agenda for Thursday at two, this Thursday at two. It's appropriate.
Okay, so we'll make that a agenda item. Go ahead, Michael.
I move that we approve Article sixty-three, establish an annual revolving fund for the Pet Burial Grounds.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. All opposed?
No.
Next one?
I move that we approve Article sixty-four, amend the Code of Howard's General Bylaws, Chapter Eight, Departmental Revolving Funds, eight dash one funds established.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Larry seconded that. Any discussion? Ed?
Want some assurance that the new chart that was being proposed takes all of the funds back to their original purposes and.
Reinstates back to what they were.
Yeah, I, to be honest, I have not been working on this directly. Let me get ahold of Carol. Capola has been working and, and see if she's been able to tie them back.
Okay.
Yeah.
That's the intent, though. I understand the intent.
Do you want to hold?
Because Ed brought this back.
You want to withdraw your.
Want to withdraw your second?
Do you want to hold?
No, no, I did.
You're okay with that?
You know, at some point before, uh, we.
Yeah.
Take our motion to support, I'd like to have some assurance, that's, that's what has been done.
Dana?
I have a request, and, and, um, I know that you talked about agendering the, um, revolving funds as an agenda item and looking at them and so forth, and I think the four articles there that have to do with revolving funds, I'd actually like to, um, ask the Finance Committee to come to that meeting as well, because I think, um, the members of the committee have some questions on that as well. So I, I think, uh, just a night talking about revolving funds is, is, it would be a good night spent, I think.
Okay.
And Madam Chair, again, on that particular subject, I want it to be more broad when it's, uh, agendaed, because it wasn't just who has a revolving fund, it's how the mechanism works, who gives authority, who has jurisdictional authority to expend from them, I mean, it's more than just a listing of the funds.
Yeah, discussion of.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you, Dana.
So all those items related to the revolving funds will be held?
Held, right, okay, so where does that leave us at?
Sixty-five.
Sixty-five.
I move that we approve Article sixty-five, rescind the establishment of the Capital Infrastructure Revitalization Fund at Cranberry Valley Golf Course.
Second.
Moved and seconded, uh, any discussion? All in favor? Aye, all opposed?
I thought that was a revolving.
Yeah, except it's rescinding.
It's rescinding, though, right, yeah.
That's what the motion was, to rescind.
Yeah.
Do we need, oh.
You said hold all the ones related, so I.
That has to do with the expenditure from, as opposed to just torching them and taking them away.
All right, so.
Whatever you want to do.
Are, are you good with that? Chris, you're fine?
It's your warrant. What are your thoughts on that article then?
I mean, I thought that if you want to have a discussion, a comprehensive discussion, why would you vote some of them and not others?
All right, so.
That was.
Okay.
All right, let's just hold them.
I just figure if we're getting rid of it, and we all agree that we want to get rid of it, why not? But I guess we're gonna establish, all right.
I agree with you, I mean, we, we, this is not going to be a revolving fund as a consequence of this action.
I guess that's his point, though, if we're having a discussion about revolving funds, should we?
It's really, I don't know. I'm gonna, I'm gonna leave my motion. I don't see the reason in talking about this.
I did already.
You seconded?
Right, moved and seconded, so any further discussion? All in favor? Aye, all opposed? Okay. So we'll go ahead with the rescinding of the.
No, Article sixty-eight, I think we go to, right, because the next one's not rescinding, is it?
You don't want to do sixty-six then, or?
Yeah, sixty-six is rescind the authorization for the golf restaurant lease. So we might as well.
I move that we approve Article sixty-six be included in the warrant, rescind the authorization for the golf restaurant lease fifty-three D revolving account, and transfer the balance into the Pro Shop revolving account.
Okay. Early second.
Seconded, Ed, seconded. Any further discussion? All in favor? Aye, all opposed? Okay, now.
Now, this one does have something.
This one we will hold.
Oh, yeah.
Yep, and sixty, no, no, not sixty, okay.
Move that we, oh, sixty-eight.
Sixty-eight, yeah.
Sixty-eight.
Michael, sorry.
I move that we approve Article sixty-eight Stabilization Fund.
Second.
Moved and seconded, any discussion? All in favor? Aye, all opposed? Okay, unanimous, Michael?
I move that we approve Article sixty-nine OPEB Trust Fund.
Second.
Any discussion, moved and seconded? All in favor? Aye, all opposed? Okay, Michael?
I move that we approve Article seventy, fund prior year's unpaid bills.
Second.
Moved and seconded, any discussion? All in favor? Aye, all opposed?
This is a tough one, Michael.
I move that we approve Article seventy-one, Herring Fisheries.
Second.
Moved and seconded, any discussion? All in favor? Aye, all opposed?
I will note, in a misguided moment, our legal counsel actually didn't think we needed the herring fisheries.
Oh, we needed, are you kidding me? We couldn't close the meeting without it.
I'd be leaving by the back door if that happened.
Actually.
Can I administer this report?
Well, no, no, actually, with, without having maintained that article in our warrant all these many years, um, the, when we closed our herring fisheries, and the state said we didn't have the right to, our ability to say yes, we did, was based on the fact that we had continuously taken action on the herring fishery.
That, that and Sid threatened to have a fistfight with the state.
My point is actually, Trump said, though, we didn't do it, we couldn't close the meeting.
Well, that, that and Sid threatened to have the police come and, and arrest the state officials if they tried to open it.
Town administrator's report.
Okay, town, town administrator's. I said that already, everybody just keeps talking, so.
One quick little other comment. In another area of the country, south of here, it was the sale of the Shad Row Fishery that funded General Washington's Army during the winter at Valley Forge.
That I didn't know.
That in a raid.
And I just watched Sons of Liberty, the whole thing, so I'm into that, Ed.
That in a raid of Trenton that resulted in more provisions.
Yeah.
Not to extend the meeting, because I think we did much better than I thought we were gonna do. Could we just recap, maybe, Chris, from your notes, if you could just recap what's coming back?
Yeah.
Yeah, so on the holds, I, I didn't write down the numbers, so I'm just gonna do the topic. So a hold on the local excise tax, um, actually a hold for the explanation added on the wastewater sewer budget, a hold on Lower County Road, a hold on solar botaic, a hold on the Chatham-Harwich, uh, regional agreement, a hold on the.
For the school.
Regional agreement for the schools, yeah, sorry. A hold on the proposed amendments to the Harwich, uh, Town Charter on Capital Outlay, a hold on a proposed amendment on ex officio, those I think are just pending the clarification on the wording. A hold on the Affordable Housing Trust, a hold on the general bylaws, uh, department revolving accounts, a hold on departmental revolving fund authorization. Just as a reminder on those two, one, you have to have a bylaw that gives you the fund, and then the second one sets the level that has to be set each year.
I think we had also a hold on the town operating budget, didn't we go through with that? And a hold on Mo-, um, the Montmoi budget, and Cape Tech budget.
I think we voted them pending a final number.
Oh, I think, sorry, I wrote that, I wrote my holds down prior to doing that. I apologize, okay, never mind.
But your list corresponds, or do you?
Yeah.
Okay, on, um, Town Administrator's Report, I'll, I'll make this kind of expedited, but, uh, we, we did have, uh, today, we finalized and sent out the RFP on the project manager for the sewer, that did, uh, finally, on the sewer project, that got out today, um, so I appreciate the efforts of Bob Lawton. Friday was the deadline for the Assistant Town Administrator Search applications for the initial review. I believe the number was thirty-seven, uh, so we'll have a memo going out. I think Ed was the member of the board that's facilitating or working with that, uh, search committee. So the, they'll be distributed to get comments, so that will be out shortly. And the Town Engineer posting is out, the Town Surveyor posting is out, and the, um, the Building Commissioner, uh, part-time backup person or building local game inspector, we have a vacancy there, is also out, uh, so if folks are interested, uh, and we are looking for some temporary secretarial support. And one, actually, we are, uh, looking for, uh, secretarial support for the Administration Office, Sandy Robinson, who has been here for a long time, uh, has expressed, um, that she will be retiring, uh, at some point, so we're trying to hire somebody to have a little bit of overlap. So she will be here for a, uh, an extended period more, but there is a time horizon to when she will decide to retire, probably, uh, tail end of the summer.
I told her she could, but.
I know, I said the same.
Everyone retires at some point.
I'd like to retire.
Not, not tonight. Madam Chair, I just, through you, I just want a clarification, because as we all know, rumors travel pretty quick around here, uh, so my question is, the engineer, are we recruiting for a replacement in the same construct, or? Okay, so it's, there's no, like, remodeling of where they report or how they report, or where they.
I think we had some internal discussions about that, we decided to just keep it as it is.
Thank you.
Hence no. That concludes my, uh, comments this evening, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Chris. Selectmen's Report, Dawn?
I got nothing.
Ed?
Nope. Chris, just on the engineer thing, there was a study done a few years ago, whether it made sense to go outside or inside, stay inside with it, I believe it was.
That was a recommendation, it was done while I was here.
Can you forward me that study, please? And then, has anyone looked at the current solar project to make sure? I know Peter Hughes kind of kept reminding us all that one of us should keep a, pay attention to that, and I think we voted. You do it, did you, have you looked at it?
I have not.
Oh, all right. Is anyone, uh.
The numbers, yeah.
Dust it off and polish it.
I'm not looking at that, we should look at that.
I'll try to track that down when I get back.
Peter tracked that constantly.
Well, Peter's not here, we can give him an extra task.
Well, I'll take an action and, uh, contact Peter.
Okay.
Oh, and Chris, we went over the budget, uh, message. When do we get the budget?
Actually, I talked to Carol, uh, today, by the end of the week, you'll have it.
And then when will we, when will we have our first go-around at you on the budget?
First go-around at me on the budget?
At the budget, yeah.
How about review of the budget, rather than, how about we make it civil?
I mean, we, we have, uh, March second is the Saturday session to go over it.
So we'll go over it first, then?